Hi, good evening, everybody. It's Monday, October 19th, and I want to welcome everybody to the meeting of the City Council. We're pleased tonight to have with us Reverend Jaloah Hale from Smyrna First United Methodist Church at 1315 Concord Road. Reverend Hale, I'd invite you to come up and lead us in the invocation and pledge. Please rise, everybody.
Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for this opportunity to gather this evening. Lord, make your face to shine upon us and be gracious to us. We ask that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. We ask for a special blessing upon our various levels of city officials as they lead our great city of Smyrna. God grant each leader wisdom to lead and guidance as they make daily decisions. Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of this meeting tonight. We pray for this evening's agenda, and we ask for your continued wisdom and your guidance so that this meeting will be productive and that it will be in the best interest for all who live, work, and play in and around our beloved city of Smyrna and beyond. We ask for your blessings upon our community. May it be a reflection of you in all that we say and all that we do, and it is in your name we do pray. Amen. At this time, let us join in together and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Hale, for being with us this evening. Item two, agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. We have a special guest with us this evening. Before we get to that, is there, we've got an election coming up. Are there any candidates who wish to come speak at this time? Okay, we'll continue on. So tonight, we have with us Gabrielle Tobin, who lives here in Smyrna and is really a superstar, and we're going to recognize her tonight. She's a freshman at Lovett High School, proud senior Girl Scout member for the past eight years, and as she's gone forward in her endeavor to get the prestigious Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest honor that any high school ninth through 12th grader can earn in Girl Scouting, and nationally, only 6% of Girl Scouts earn this award, she's developed a way to tutor students in need in math. And she's working with Lindley Sixth Grade Academy by providing school supplies and volunteer tutoring services in areas of math and reading. She recognizes the challenges of math and the extra hurdle of virtual learning. She rallied her friends, and they created peer-to-peer math videos to aid students learning remotely called "For Math's Sake: Peer-to-Peer Videos." She believes that she has a personal responsibility to pay it forward and give back to her community when and where she can, and she genuinely cares about her peers getting a solid mathematics education and having access to resources like peer-to-peer math videos to supplement their learning. And I just can't thank you enough and applaud you enough for taking this initiative on on your own. I sure wish it would have been around when I was in school doing math. I could have used it. This is in Louis Wheaton's ward, and I'd turn it over to Louis for the presentation of the award and any remarks you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when Gabrielle reached out to me, I guess maybe a couple of months ago, about this award, I was just so impressed and proud, certainly as a Smyrna resident and as a resident in Ward Seven particularly. It was just awesome to see someone who, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of all kinds of things going on, just wants to help kids with their education. In a pretty critical area of education and learning math, I know math was not necessarily always my strong suit, but now I realize I use it a whole lot more than I ever really would have thought.
Wait a minute, you're a professor at Georgia Tech.
Hey, look, look, I'm telling you, it was, it was not good. But I use math all the time now, and I've grown to love it myself, and I'm so impressed with someone who, who also loves math and really who wants to make, make the experience of learning math and applying math, which is really what's important, better for, better for the kids. I'm also really encouraged in the fact, and come on up, come on up to the mic there. While I'm saying this, I want everyone to hear this because I think this is really cool. She reached out to me, and you know, part of the project is to get letters of recommendation from various individuals in the community, and she got some awesome letters of support at the state level as well for this project, which is just impressive. So, so thank you for doing it, and you know, we want to award you. We have a medal here and a certificate for our Mayor's Award for Education that we'd love to honor you with, but go ahead, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Norton, Councilman Wheaton, and the entire City Council for recognizing my Girl Scout Gold Award project for math, peer-to-peer videos. I would also like to say thank you to my parents who told me years ago that I only needed the faith of a mustard seed and a willing heart to accomplish anything, even if I didn't have money. And I would also like to thank Dr. McGee, who told, who, for giving me a, for me, a 10-year-old at the time, an opportunity four years ago to build a trusted partnership with Lindley Sixth Grade Academy. And most importantly, I'm thankful to God for making this possible. The initial idea for the videos was due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And when I learned that the Cobb County School District, like most of the country, was physically closing its doors, I reached out to Dr. McGee to inquire what I could do to, what I could do as a summer project to assist her, to assist with her students' virtual learning environment. She expressed concerns about the potential decline in math and recommended that I review the summer math packet and come up with a creative idea to connect with her students. I contacted my friends and fellow Girl Scout seniors, Marissa and Coralie, and other school friends such as my friend Nadina, Megan, Josh, Nick, and Samar for assistance, and we decided to create peer-to-peer videos. When I embarked my, on my Girl Scout Gold Award project, I conducted research and learned that math is targeted for improvement in Georgia. Specifically, when I reviewed College and Career Ready Performance Index Report, which it revealed that Georgia's middle school proficiency in math was 29%, 29.71% in 2019 in comparison to Lindley Sixth Grade Academy, which was 28.15%. Consequently, I expanded my video concept to assist all middle school students in Georgia and across the country. To concept, today, I already, I've already received support from local and state elected officials, other middle schools in metro Atlanta, State Superintendent Richard Woods, and the Georgia Department of Education, Cobb County School District, Mathnasium of Smyrna, my school, the Lovett School, Breakthroughs, Atlanta, Miami, Cincinnati, New Orleans, and San Francisco, Sugar Creek Charter Middle School, and Paradigm 360 Foundation, both located in Charlotte, North Carolina, and a middle school in the Bahamas. I've also been interviewed by Fox Five and 11 Alive News, and each has graciously posted my videos on their websites. Further, I am working with two organizations to launch an app in a few days, which will be available for download on electronic devices. And finally, I've launched my website, I'm getting ready to launch my website, and my not-for-profit foundation, which would, which will focus on developing math videos for seventh and eighth grade students. Thank you.
We'll come down. If you'll, if you'll stay there, we're going to come down and present you with this award and get some photos, okay?
That's awesome stuff.
Thank you.
You just want to take?
They got to get a picture.
Yeah, there you go.
is my friend, Representative, State Representative Kim Schofield, who's here for that presentation. So, thank you for being here tonight, Representative Schofield. All right, our next issue, our next item on the agenda is item four, land issues, zonings, and annexations, and the first three, I believe, are going to be tabled until November 2nd. Item A, 2019-440, public hearing zoning request, Z19-019, rezoning from NRC NOI to MU for the development of 170-unit independent senior living facility at 114 townhomes at a density of 11.85 units per acre, 23.95 acres, landlot 775, 810, and 811 at 2320 Campbell Road, its In-Line Communities LLC, tabled until November 2nd meeting of the mayor and council. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Councilman Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Glenn Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0, and I forgot to mention Susan Wilkinson was unable to be with us this evening. Item B will also be tabled, 2020-125, public hearing zoning request, Z20-004, rezoning from RM10 and R15 to RM10 conditional for the development of 12 single-family detached homes at a density of 7.5 units per acre, 1.6 acres, landlot 487 at 3655 Love Street, 1080 and 1096 Church Street, the Martinello Group LLC. Again, this will be tabled until the November 2nd meeting. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 6-0. Item C is the last item that will be tabled, 2020-233, it's a public hearing zoning request, Z20-006, rezoning from NS and RM10 conditional for the development of 10 single-family attached townhomes at a density of 9.3 units per acre, 1.08 acres, landlot 669 at 3302 Atlanta Road by Edgeline LLC, also tabled to November 2nd. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Gould moves. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. All right, it's approved 6-0. Item D, 2020-348, it's a public hearing, zoning request, Z20-010, rezoning from FC to LC for the use as a professional office, 0.25 acres, landlot 375, 726 Wendy Hill Road, Omakodian Medical Services. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Omakodian Medical Services is requesting a rezoning from FC, Future Commercial, to LC, Limited Commercial, for the ability to use the existing building as a professional office. The subject property is owned FC, however, it has been used commercially most recently as a hair salon as a non-conforming use. The property is occupied by an existing structure that will remain. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to LC to formalize how the property has historically been used. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the September 14th, 2020 meeting. Community Development has reviewed the proposed development against the requirements of the zoning ordinance with respect to the use as a professional office. The proposed development meets all zoning requirements for a professional office. Community Development staff is supportive of the change in zoning from the non-conforming zoning of FC to LC. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from FC to LC at 726 Wendy Hill Road.
Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. So, my husband is actually not here, he's the sole owner of Omakodian Medical Services. We just had a baby, so we have a lot going on.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, basically, we bought the property a couple of years ago, initially intended to have my husband's practice at the location, opening an urgent care, and then everything happened when we found out that a couple of urgent cares opening within a mile of proximity in the area, so we had to relocate and find a different location. But we still would like to keep the property and be able to lease out for other users, maybe like a professional offices, something other than a salon because of the, there's just more stable income type of business and less turnover, so that's, that's why we're requesting for the rezoning.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you being here. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Wilkinson is out tonight. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for doing business in Smyrna. I appreciate you, and as Mr. Bennett indicated, it has been a business for many years there on Wendy Hill and Burbank in a simple zoning reclassification, so without further ado, a motion to approve as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Item five is privileged licenses. We have none this evening. Item six is formal business. Item A, ordinance 2020-11, approval of ordinance 2020-11 to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smyrna, Georgia by repealing Chapter 74, peddlers and solicitors in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 74, peddlers and solicitors, and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
In January 2020, the city clerk's office had a conversation with Police Chief Joe Bennett, BME, regarding the procedures in place for the handling of peddlers and solicitors that applied for license with the city of Smyrna. The previous ordinance was written in 1977 and had applicants come into the city clerk's office to file their application, then to the police department to have their background check, then back to the city clerk's office to pick up their badge. The new ordinance reviews the procedure of everything being done through the police department, removing the city clerk's office from the process and allowing for the applicant to begin and complete the process through the police department. Additionally, it defines exemptions from the permit requirement, specific information that is required on the application, reasons for permit denial, as well as the appeal process, permits suspension and revocation, the addition of solicitor route information, as well as specific prohibitions. The city clerk and police chief recommend approval of ordinance 2020-11 to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smyrna, Georgia by repealing Chapter 74, peddlers and solicitors in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 74, peddlers and solicitors, and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Mr. Gould, will you handle this issue, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a bit of a cleanup process, but it's something that'll simplify, simplify the process for, for solicitors, but then more importantly, probably it clears up the process for our residents. So if they have questions, this is definitely a, an improvement in understanding how the whole licensing works for peddlers and solicitors. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 6A, ORD 2020-11 as previously read.
Thank you. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item B, ordinance 2020-12, public hearing, approval of ordinance 2020-12, an ordinance to amend section 719.84J and 1502.9 of Appendix A, zoning ordinance for the requirement of a sanitary sewer analysis for the zoning of commercial development, mixed-use development, or residential development with 10 or more dwelling units, and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. Request from Public Works to amend existing ordinances along with amendment to the FY2021 schedule of fees and charges approved by the mayor and council in conjunction with FY2021 adopted budget. Public Works is requesting an update to the fee schedule to include a new fee, development, redevelopment capacity impact fee for a charge of $1,000 to a development of five dwellings or more. The North Metro Water District requirements under Water and Wastewater Action, item WW6, requires large developments and redevelopments to undergo capacity study to deem if the city sewer is able to handle the development discharge in the sewer mains. It is Public Works' responsibility to deem if water and sewer is available along with capacity. The current ordinance only states to provide developer with water sewer availability letter. By amending current ordinance, section, section 719, redevelopment overlay district, section four, initiation of concept review J, along with 1502.9 to add capacity study, this will put the city in good standing with the current audit. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2020-12, an ordinance to amend section 719.84J and 1502.9 of zoning of commercial development, mixed-use development, or residential development with 10 or more dwelling units, and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
That's our understanding from staff that this is a requirement of the Metro Apollitan North Georgia Water Planning District, and I also understand we need to make a small edit in the ordinance as it was written. I'll turn it over to Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask our legal counsel to clear up the, the small change that we need to make before I make, make a motion.
Sure, the very small change is to add one word in the second sentence so that it is clear that this only applies to developments that are commercial developments or mixed-use or residential developments with 10 or more dwelling units. So, we're going to add the word "such" in the, in the application, so it would say "also for such developments," et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, and this, before you go, Corgi, this is a, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is simply an ordinance that requires that before we approve any development outlined in the ordinance, that we go in and evaluate the sewers to make sure that our city sewers can handle this. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-12 with the stipulations that our counsel, the legal counsel, Mr. Cochran, made. Make that in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Thank you. Item C, ordinance 2020-14, approval of ordinance 2020-14 to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smyrna, Georgia by adding a new section, third-party maintenance and reporting of records for fire and life safety systems in chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is estimated that up to 50% of all fire and life safety systems go untested and maintained each year, resulting in an increased number of false alarms and unintentional danger to occupants. The Fire Department has requested this amendment to improve compliance with the adopted Fire and Life Safety Code and increase efficiency within the Bureau of Fire Prevention. This amendment provides a secure path for all monthly, quarterly, and annual system inspections, testing, and maintenance required by the adopted codes and the National Fire Protection Association to be delivered to the Smyrna Fire Department through an approved third-party inspection reporting system. Adopting this amendment will allow the Fire Marshal's Office to more efficiently process, manage, and document compliance reports, and will create a platform for more effective communication between property owners, contractors, and inspectors regarding deadlines, testing, and system deficiencies. There will be no change in the fee schedule resulting from the adoption of this ordinance. The only fee associated with the program would be assessed by the third-party vendor and would be the responsibility of the licensed contractor submitting the report. Fire Chief Roy Akery and Fire Prevention Division Chief Dustin Davy recommend approval to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Smyrna, Georgia by adding a new section, third-party maintenance and reporting of records for fire and life safety systems in chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We'll turn this over to Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve ordinance 2020-14.
Any discussion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have one this evening. A 2020-408, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of 122,049 square-foot distribution warehouse/office space known as the Highlands Distribution Center at 6300 Highlands Parkway, Evans General Contractors. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. A commercial building permit has been issued at 6300 Highland Parkway for the construction of a new 122,049-square-foot multi-tenant distribution warehouse/office space known as the Highlands Distribution Center. The total estimated cost of the project is $5,477,000, and Evans General Contractors is listed as a general contractor for the project.
Very good. This is in Ward Seven. Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Bennett read for us, this is a good opportunity to take care of needed reconstruction down there on Highlands Parkway. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7A, 2020-408, as read.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, 2020-381, approval of the September 17th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, 2020-415, approval of the October 1st, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item C, 2020-416, approval of the October 5th, 2020 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, 2020-417, approval of the October 5th, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item E, 2020-366, authorization for Public Works to use TIPS Cooperative Contract Number 17110502 for CIPP cured-in-place piping for Floyd Drive Stormwater Project in the amount of $371,000 funded through the Stormwater CIP and authorize the mayor to sign and execute any related documents. Item F, 2020-242, approval of an extension of normal work hours for RDJE Incorporated during the water sewer modifications on Wendy Hill Boulevard project from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM for five dates. The contractors requesting dates from October 26th, 2020 through October 30th, 2020. And item G, 2020-427, approved request for the road for the road closure at Old Spring Road intersection on the north side of Wendy Hill Road beginning October twenty-first, 2020 through November fifth, 2020, as requested by Baldwin Paving Company for the construction of a temporary road for a lane shift on the Wendy Hill Boulevard project.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
It's moved by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Thank you. Item nine is Ward Reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a, a brief update for Ward Seven. Our residents on Monday, October twenty-sixth, uh, at six-thirty, uh, will be having a virtual town hall meeting to discuss, um, some possible designs for safety, uh, and, uh, traffic improvement along Oakdale Road area. Uh, so you should be able to see that on the website. Uh, you may have gotten an email from me or see it through social media. Um, try to attend that. Uh, look forward to hearing, uh, your comments and thoughts about that. As well, just want to encourage all of us to, uh, stay safe and, um, take note of, um, wearing masks and social distancing and all those good things, hand washing and all that stuff. Our numbers are back on the rise, uh, but we need to, uh, make sure that we can get this under control. Thank you. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick things. First, uh, a little shout-out to a couple of our, uh, athletic teams at Campbell High School. Uh, the girls', uh, varsity softball team made state playoffs again, and they'll, they'll, uh, play Harrison High School tomorrow. Um, the girls' volleyball team also made states, and they'll go up against Walton, uh, this week. And Friday is home football against McKeachern, seven-thirty. Come on out and support the teams. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report this evening.
Mr. Wagner wants to talk about elections. Mr. Wagner.
Hey, it's the most important thing, right? Um, yeah, just remind everyone, early voting still happening this week and next week. Um, Smyrna's done well, more than the state average. Over twenty-five percent of registered voters in the City of Smyrna have already voted. Um, so let's get that as close to a hundred percent as we can. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
No report, sir.
Mr. Cochran?
Nothing.
Ms. Heather?
No.
All right. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. We have nobody signed up, but is there anybody who's in the audience who wishes to say anything this evening? All right. We don't have any, so if there are no other items to be brought before this body, uh, we are adjourned at seven-thirty-one. Thank you.